Good afternoon. Come on, good afternoon. This is a joyous occasion. I know most of you are thinking about that weather out there, but let's just move that from our minds at this time and think about the occasion. It's a very special occasion for more than one reason and certainly honorary today in going into second-term Commissioner Cupid. And I'm just honored to be here to emcee this program and be a part of it. We're gonna move it right along. I think that's the direction she gave me. So we're gonna move that right along. I'm gonna go ahead and I want to recognize all of your special guests. And you're very, very special and I truly want to say that on her behalf. So thank you for being here. Thank you for being that special guest. But there are a few people that I want to recognize in attendance today. So far, I think I've seen our chairman, Mike Boyce. I've seen Commissioner Ott. I don't know whether I've seen Commissioner Weatherford. I don't think so. I know Commissioner Burrow is out of town. We also have with us Magistrate Court Kelly Hill, Magistrate Court Judge Moore, Magistrate Court Joyette Holmes. We have State Court Judge Bridget Campbell, State Court Marsha Lake, Judges. We have Tim Houston from Acworth Alderman. I haven't seen any others. We have our Deputy Superior Court Clerk Kimberly Carroll, Chief Deputy Sheriff Milton Beck. We also have Ms. Deanne Bonner from NAACP and Ben Williams from SCLC. I know we have a lot of other organizations here, but if I miss any other elected official, please stand to be recognized. But thank you. We're gonna move on with the program. We're gonna have our opening prayer by Dr. Tony Lee.
Blessings are you, oh Lord, our God. Yours, oh God, is the greatness and the power and the glory and the majesty and the splendor. For everything in heaven and earth is yours. Yours, oh Lord, is the kingdom. You are exalted as head over all. Well and honor come from you. You are the ruler of all things. In your hands are strength and power to exalt and to give strength to all. You give our government responsibility to carry out portion of your purpose. Behind every political agenda, you are at work moving history to conform to your intent. Even when leaders stray from your course, you are able to make all things new and to work all things together for good. God, today we ask for a blessing on Commissioner Lisa Cupid as she begin her second term in office. We pray that your hand would strengthen and protect her, that your voice would guide and comfort her, that your heart will consume her, that your will would lead her. God, please give her calmness in the face of storm, encouragement in the face of frustration and humility in the face of success. Give her the wisdom to know and to do what is right, the compassion to list us with generosity and the courage to say no to all that is contrary to your statute and holy law. Lord, we pray for her family and especially her husband and children that they may send your presence and know your love. Now, oh Lord, we dedicate this swearing ceremony to you. May this be the beginning of a new dawn for the people of District 4 as we humble ourselves before you and acknowledge you alone as our Lord, our Savior and our Redeemer. We pray this in the name of the Father and of the Son, the Lord Jesus Christ, and of the Holy Spirit. Amen.
This time, I'm gonna ask Nehemiah Noah to come forth and allow me to join them in doing the pledge of allegiance. Stand right there if you want to. You want the mic or you don't? Okay. Okay. You ready? Okay. Go ahead. Allegiance to the Father, the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. You can go back to your seats. I don't know that I could have done that at that age, but I tell you, that was good. It honored me to be able to stand there with them. At this time, we're gonna ask Lisa Lee to come forward and sing our National Anthem.
Oh, say, can you see by the dawn's early light what so proudly we hailed at the twilight's last gleaming? Whose broad stripes and bright stars through the perilous fight o'er the ramparts we watched were so gallantly streaming? And the rocket's red glare, the bombs bursting in air, gave proof through the night that our flag was still there. Oh, say, does that star-spangled banner yet wave o'er the land of the free and the home of the brave?
Thank you, Ms. Lee. A poem by Ms. Jenny Lee. Thank you.
Commissioner Cupid, another year is now beginning as an old one has come to end. New promises await us just as old ones we did spend. In office, a second term you start to serve both the greatest and the small. No one's needs are overlooked because you work hard to serve us all. From your mind comes great ideas as you contemplate our land. God gave you the skill fairly to discern the most well-thought-out elaborate plans. You work to seek what's best for us and you speak deliberately. You care about your fellow man, that we live in safety, peace and we are free. While others leave their work each day, your work is never done. You stay up late for our own sake and you rise before the morning sun. You are kind and you're compassionate. You're concerned about our lives. You do the things that you know need done and you're ready for each day as it arrives. You care and seek to understand. You make this world a better place. You fight for those who cannot fight. Our burdens you erase. Our community is blessed to have you and all the promise that you bring. And our God in heaven is proud of you and for you, his angels sing.
Thank you, Ms. Lee. And I certainly, I have a lot of truth in that poem, but I can say as far as never sleeping, I'm constantly getting emails at three or four or five in the morning. And that's not all bad. It helps to start out my day. But thank you again. I'm gonna ask, at this time, introduce Commissioner Lisa Cupid, which will introduce our Judges and family members or whoever she deem appropriate. Ladies and gentlemen, Commissioner Lisa Cupid.
Thank you so much. And I want to thank David. He had the task of fulfilling the same role when I was first sworn in. And it's an honor to have you do this for me once again. So thank you, David, for your support. I want to thank all of you for being here today. And this is a swearing-in ceremony, not a swearing-at ceremony. And I appreciate all of you for being patient with me and my guests as we bear through the traffic of getting here today. But I truly am honored that you are here. And I'm very honored to be sworn in by the two Judges who are here with me today. I'm sorry. I think I need a Kleenex from crying from that poem, but that was very thoughtful. I've had the honor of meeting Judge Bridget Campbell when I was a law student. And this was before I even thought that I would run for office. She may not remember me, but I remembered her because she spoke at a program, professionalism in the profession of law. And when I saw her speak, I actually had my oldest child, he was a baby at the time. And she's giving me advice and I'm rocking this baby in my arms and she is encouraging me that I need to go move to Marietta Square if I'm gonna practice. Well, I'm in Marietta Square and I hope to get to that practicing thing real soon. But I just want to thank you for setting a bar even before I even thought this was possible for me. And with our other judge, Judge Marsha Lake, I had the honor of meeting her while we were running that hard, tough, soul-searching race of coming into office. And I'm so glad we made it on the other side. And I can't tell you how excited I am when you're excited to see me because I'm excited to see you and to see what you do. And I know that if what you do on the bench is any reflection of who you were when you campaigned, then Cobb County's in good hands. So with that, I'd like to call up Judges Bridget, the Honorable Bridget Campbell and Honorable Marsha Lake. As I get sworn, I'm gonna have my family come up with me, if Craig, Nehemiah, Noah don't mind joining me. And I'm gonna do something very unique. I have the honor of having my grandmother with me today from New Jersey. And she's with my parents now and they've been doing a remarkable job of having her here in Georgia. But I'm going to ask my extended family who's here to be up here with me because I didn't even think you'd be up here with me. And as I'm getting sworn in, this is a reflection of all the seeds that you've sown into my life and our family's life. So I would definitely like for anybody who's extended family, especially you Grandma, to be up here as I get sworn in. Okay? You guys, come on up. We need your Bible. Bridget, help me get a hunch. Here is the Bible. I can't hide it. All right, let them be the center of the table. Anybody who sparks a myth or a handicap, they're bound to have it. Okay, we're gonna have to go. We're gonna have to go right around here. Can we sing? Let's move this. Is that enough? Could you mind my microphone? Okay. Okay. All right, and we're gonna ask Commissioner if you would put your left hand on the Bible and raise your right hand. Okay. Commissioner Cupid, it's an honor, it's a pleasure to be here to swear you in. I'm glad you remember that story. And I'm gonna give you a hug after I swear you in because we normally meet each other at Publix or Kroger with the children as well. I am here today to give you the official oath of county commissioner. And again, it's a pleasure as a State Court Judge here with Cobb County. Now, I state your name.
I, Lisa Cupid.
Thank you. Do swear or affirm that I will well and truly discharge the duties of Commissioner for Cobb County in all matters which require my official action to the best of my knowledge and skill. And I will so act as in my judgment will be most conducive to the welfare and best interests of the entire county. I have been a resident thereof for the time required by the Constitution and the laws of this state. I do further solemnly swear or affirm that I am not the holder of any unaccounted-for public money due to the state or any public subdivision or authority thereof, that I am not the holder of any office of trust under the government of the United States, any other state or any foreign state which I am prohibited from holding by the laws of the state of Georgia, and that I am otherwise qualified to hold said office according to the constitutions of the United States and the laws of Georgia, and that I will support the constitutions of the United States and of this state. So help me God, I do so swear.
So help me God, I do swear.
Thank you. At this time, Judge Marsha Lake will give you the loyalty oath.
Commissioner, it is my honor to be standing here with you. I know that the public has no idea what it took for both of us to get where we are today. And I'm very, very proud of you. I state your name.
I, Lisa Cupid.
A citizen of Cobb County and being an employee of Cobb County and the recipient of public funds for services rendered as such employee, do hereby solemnly swear and affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of Georgia. So help you God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you. Do you want us to move this over? This is not my turn to speak in the program, but I forgot to invite someone special up here when I did that oath, who is like family to me. And I want to recognize her in front of everyone. If my assistant Bianca Keaton is in the room, she's been so busy setting up. She's outside setting up. But I do want to recognize Bianca. And I actually wanted her up here because I feel the commitment I make is a commitment that's shared, not only with her, but with her family. So when you see her, please recognize her for all of the work that she does. And if you don't mind just enjoying me and applauding her, and applauding her, excuse me, though she's not here. Thank you. For the next part of our program, we'll have some remarks and they'll be brief. But I did want to give honor to my family, to provide them opportunity to speak today. So Dad, Mark Smith, if you don't mind.
Thank you. Once again, I'm honored to be here and proud of my daughter Lisa. But I am happy to be here today with my mom, who wanted to be here the first four years. And I'm happy she's here to witness this occasion because like me, she's extremely proud of her granddaughter. So I'm glad she had this opportunity to put this in her memory bank. So Mom, I'm happy that you're here too. Okay? She usually speaks, but she declined this time. I guess you made her shy today. But like I said, I'm glad she's here. And Lisa, again, congratulations. And you've made all of us extremely proud. Thank you.
Thank you. This is in no particular order. My dear husband, Craig Cupid.
I'm Craig Cupid. All right. Good job. All right, next. All right. Peer pressure. Hey, where's the page? Yeah, I'm Craig Cupid. Most people call me the Commissioner's husband. That's my second title. But on the way here, the kids wanted to write something for you. So kids, did you want to read it yourself or you want me to read it for you? All right, I'll read it. Thank you all for being here. Commissioner Cupid, you are a good Commissioner. You are so great, Commissioner. Lisa is the best Commissioner. So a little bit of bias there, for sure. But so basically, I reflect their feelings as well. You are a little bit of bias, but you're the best Commissioner, I believe. And Jenny's poem is very touching and really reflective of what you do. It's like she lives at her house. So wake up very early, go to bed late and still find time to take care of the kids and myself as well. So thank you for just your love as a wife, a mother and a Commissioner. Thank you.
All right. My mom, who typically declines these opportunities, has decided to take the podium. So without much delay, Yvonne Smith, thank you.
You're welcome. I'd like to start by thanking everyone for being here. Since Lisa... Sorry. I'd like to thank everyone for being here. Since Lisa was a very little girl, I had a strong feeling that whatever her profession turned out to be, it would be serving others. At 16, Lisa was taking advanced classes at her high school. She was working at a store. She was teaching the violin to someone. In addition to other things, I don't know how she did it, but she did it. Lisa's willing to help anyone regardless of their social economic status. She would get up early in the morning, stay up late and never complain. I don't know how she does it, but she certainly does. And when we lived in Michigan, I don't know if you know, Lisa has a twin sister by the name of Veneta, who's named after her grandmother here. And their friends at school called our home the United Nations because we had students staying there from every continent. Someone who attended the University of Michigan at that time wasn't able to go home for the holiday or to go to anywhere they wanted to. They didn't have anywhere, sorry, to go. They were always welcome at our home. I am just in awe of Lisa's ability to do the things that she's done. When she became an engineer, I always felt in the back of my mind she would be an attorney because heaven knows she's had enough arguments with me. So I know she had a lot of practice. She'd always ask why and wherefore. And you know, she always... She would never... You could never say no to Lisa and it stays there. And then, of course, she does her research. So then all her answers would be backed up by her research. So Lisa, I'm very proud of you. And I have to say, her husband, he's just a magnificent person also. Both of their integrity is beyond question. Anyone who knows Lisa knows that she's extremely genuine. If she tells you she will do something, she will do it. And I'm extremely proud of her humility, her caring attitude. She really does care for others. I don't know how... She does take care of her family. She takes care of her constituents. She finds time to take care of herself, you know. You know, she's a good athlete. She still runs, which is really good. And we're extremely proud of you. And I just want you to know that I'm grateful that you all showed up here today. Thank you.
Okay. I don't want to leave any other family member out. Is there anybody else that you want to share? Sister, did you want to share anything? Young sister, quickly? Okay. And then I'll get everyone out of here.
I remember when my sister first told me she was running for office. At first, I did not want to help. I was like, you do you, best of luck. But that didn't last very long. Next thing I knew, I was at candidate training with her. And I was enduring sleepless nights with her and knocking on doors, all for Cupid for Cobb, doing door hangers, everything for the campaign that we could do. Lisa even had my parents and my aunt waving signs at busy intersections and making calls and I'd take home a list of calls to make. So I knew that Lisa, with her grassroots campaign, that she was gonna achieve great results. And she did with her first campaign. And with it being the second election, I didn't lose faith at all. I knew that you were gonna... Luckily, you had no opposition, but I knew that no matter what, you were gonna come out on top. And I just want to say that again on behalf of the family that we're very proud of you. And should this come up again, you know we're all gonna be here for you making calls, waving signs all over again. Thank you.
That's my baby sister, so... Not a baby anymore. It touches me to see them up here, really. Everything that I am and everything that I'm able to do is a reflection of my family, which is why it's very important for me to make sure they were here and aptly honored. And for me to have my grandmother here, very touched. It means a lot to me that you're able to be here. Again, I want to get everybody out here on time. But I just want to share a few remarks. I was shocked in March when election time came up again and I didn't have any opposition. I was shocked because it seemed as if there had been so many challenges on the way there that the ultimate challenge of being challenged is to have a challenger. And so it was at a point of serving where I just felt like I have done everything that I can do. And it was hard to get that momentum to get up and serve when you're still serving the constituents, staying up late, waking up early to see how I'm gonna turn from being a public servant to going out and... a public servant to going out and campaigning again. And I'm so grateful that there was enough momentum to not have, to run an arduous race. And this is the most time this year I've ever spent with my family, and particularly my kids, which is a very big deal for me. I had both my kids when I was in law school, and I just always felt like they were getting cheated, and my husband was getting cheated, my family. I couldn't be a sister or a daughter because I was always... My dad said, "You just, you just don't take a break. You always have to keep running." And this year, it really gave me an opportunity to really spend time with my family. And to be honest, spending time with my family helped me to appreciate serving the public more. Because sometimes we are so inundated with what goes on here in the county, we don't realize that real life is going on at the same time. And just because people don't show up at your meetings doesn't mean that they still aren't hard at work in making Cobb County a great place to be by making their homes a great place to come home to. So... I'm honored to be here. And as much as I wanted to rest and say, really, I just was thinking I'm gonna go up to the judges' chambers and be sworn in. When I started to reflect on family, particularly on the holiday, and I went to so many different swearing-in ceremonies and heard so many wonderful things about so many wonderful people serving here in Cobb, it made me think, this is not really about you. That you must take the time to recognize all the people that made this possible. So on this very snowy day... Is it snowing yet? On this very almost snowy day, I wanted to take time to say thank you. I wanted to thank the people who have made this possible for me. I want to thank my family for making this possible. And I don't... I don't always speak of my faith, but I want to thank God publicly and just take a moment to honor Him as we do through prayer. But I just know that there have been times I've been covered. And there have been times, and I know Cobb County's been covered. I pride myself a little bit on being a strong person. Because I come from strong roots. And I've seen my parents, my mom, I know my grandmother. My family's worked very hard, hard, harder than I'll ever have to, coming from another country to make a life here and having to acclimate. I'll never have to work that hard. But there have been times that I've felt unsure, and I physically have not been as strong as I'm used to being. Sometimes it's a fallacy to have so much accomplishment athletically or academically because you sometimes don't realize that that's not where your true strength comes from. And I just want to thank everyone. Because it doesn't matter what your title is, your prayers. When I couldn't pray for myself, I'm honored and I'm blessed. It's sad to be here and to be full of excitement about our county and serving and to see so much progress. But it's also sad to see people come and go with the county, whether it's to other opportunities or to another life after this life. Being here has been very humbling. And I know while I stand up here at the podium, everyone in this audience has a story and has been charged to lead with the things that God has put in you. And if there's any commitment I have to you as being a commissioner, is to honor that and to recognize that. And to do all that I can do with the strength given me to help lead with you. I know for staff that's here, I'm so grateful you're here. You've seen a lot of us come and a lot of us go. And I recognize that. But one thing that's for sure is that your work and your efforts are seen every day in the work that this county does, regardless of what goes on up here. And I thank you for your steadfastness. I thank you for the honor that you guys show in the work that you do. I thank you for helping me with the very tough task of trying to turn our district around to the direction that we know it can be and that Cobb is. And I'm looking forward to working with you in that. And I can't thank you enough for being here today. And I'm... Even though I may not always say it, I am a bit of a workhorse. Sometimes I don't take time to... I may not say thank you enough. So if I don't say thank you enough on those times that we do work together, please know how grateful I am for all that you do. For our commissioners who are here, thank you. Commissioner Ott, thank you. You've seen these tears outside of, up here at times. And for Chairman Boyce, thank you for being a breath of fresh air. And I look forward to continuing to serve with you over your next term. For all who serve on our boards, recently appointed, have been appointed, thank you for your sacrifice. There's a lot of things you do that I don't even know, but you help keep this county going with diligence. Thank you. To our speakers here today, Dr. Lee, who serves on one of our boards, who just absolutely touched me, who served our country and found it an even continuing great honor to come and serve here in Cobb. I asked you to pray for us today because I knew that prayer was in you, because I see how you operate, and I thank you. Jenny Lee, for that beautiful poem. You said you didn't know what to write. I said, "I trust you." And you got me crying up here. Thank you. Thank you for your heart. Thank you for your heart and your encouragement. My classmate Lisa Lee, who sang that beautiful anthem. I've known Lisa since middle school, and she's here with her husband, who I went to Georgia Tech with. We didn't know that was gonna happen. But thank you for being here today. To all my family here, my family's originally from Guyana, South America. They could have a story of their own of what they've done to be here and all that they've done. I want to thank you for all of your continuing support. Thank you Nehemiah Noah for your patience with me, for dealing with me, for speaking to me silently, even though I see your lips moving, not doing it out loud. Mommy thanks you. Thank you. Thank you County Manager Hankerson for dealing with my list upon lists and getting it done and sometimes being willing to go to bat for me. Thank you, I appreciate it. To our humble staff that sits here every day, thank you. Everyone here, our police officers who are here today protecting and serving and taking time out here, our sheriff's office, thank you for what you do. Bianca Keaton, I recognized you earlier. I'm gonna recognize you again. I know it's a family affair for you two. Thank you for all you do in serving Cobb County. With that, everyone, please enjoy the rest of your day. I'm gonna let that be the close. Unfortunately, we don't... As a matter of fact, I did invite... I did invite Ben Johnson to do the closing prayer because those who were gonna do the closing prayer were unable to be here during the weather. I recognize you, Deanne Bonner, for your persistent work through the county. As I look over at DeWilliams, thank you. But with that, I'd like to turn things over to Dr. Williams so he can give a closing prayer, and we can all get out of here and beat Snowmageddon.
Thank you so much, Commissioner Cupid. And indeed, I'm honored to have been asked to give this closing prayer, but also know that as I provide these words to you, I doubt if you were praying alone... Where are you? I doubt if you were praying alone, a lot of people praying with you and for you. Gracious and loving God, we pause now to give you thanks for the opportunity to have in place leaders who understand that they are servant leaders, and they serve on behalf of others in this community and beyond. For what happens here goes way beyond our borders, and in many instances, what we try to do here is replicated elsewhere. As public servants, we ask that you help all of us to remember that we have elected them and therefore obligated to follow through on our actions, to support them, and to do all that we can do to help them to be successful. They work on our behalf in spite of differences, race, gender, creed, economic status, disabilities, or any other impairments that may try to divide us. We ask that you provide us with wisdom as we all work together to build bridges and tear down walls that separate us. We are much more effective together as a team of bridge builders with your grace and mercy, giving us the assurance that a bridge is just a wall laying flat to provide passage to and from. These we ask in the name of your Son, Christ Jesus. Amen.
Thank you, Ben. Ladies and gentlemen, our district forecommissioner, your district forecommissioner, Lisa Cupid, let's give her a big round of applause. Please, let's stand and give her a big round of applause. This is her day. This is her moment. This is our moment. Let me just say, I've worked with her the last four years, and it's been a pleasure. I think I've grown a lot because of her being a taskmaster, being very sincere, never let up. And we meet once a month or twice a month. We have an agenda, but it's getting the people's work done. And I said, "Thank you." And our staff on their behalf, we've enjoyed working with you and look forward to working with you in the future. And let me say, for whenever she's having a reception over, if you go out the doors and go to the left and to the right in the learning center, she has a receptionist, she'll be around to spend some time with her. And so with that, Commissioner, if nothing else, we stand adjourned. Thank you.